Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the May 19th, 2021 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Caldwell?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Frallinger?
Here.
Ms. Krajewski?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph? Ms. Fagan? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Okay, can we have the invocation pledge, please, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of the others. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, two to the republic which is the one that has individual liberty and justice for all. All right, we will now hear our student reps' reports, Ms. Parker and Ms. Hughes. I'm not sure which one's going first, but...
For the kindergarten academy, the students enjoyed their fun Friday this month. The magic and music-making Zoom assemblies were a hit with all of the students. The children enjoyed all the different activities as well as the picnic launch.
At Glenolden School in April, Glenolden School celebrated Autism Awareness Month by hosting a week-long spirit event. Students dressed in blue and wore sensory-friendly clothing and dressed in colors of the Autism Awareness Ribbon and a few other fun themes. Random raffle prizes were given away to over 50 students each day. Every morning during the announcements, students learned new facts about autism and even learned about celebrities who have autism. By the end of the week, more students were more aware to see the able and not the label in all people. Students in grades three to eight continue to log into iXL every free chance they get to see if they make it onto Ms. Kubito's iXL Challenge Board. They eagerly await for Friday morning to see who the lucky winners are each week. Keep up the great work. The students continue working hard each day and are using all resources to help prepare for the PSSAs.
For Norwood, on April 28th and 29th, we celebrated mismatch clothing day. It was a fun PBIS spirit day. Our students and staff looked awfully great. On Friday, April 30th, our staff and students wore pink jeans to celebrate Mrs. Haley and her return from her leave of absence as she continues to fight cancer. As a school, we collected $250, which will be donated to Payless Cancer Unit, to the people helping our Miss Haley on her cancer-free journey. Mrs. Haley returned on Monday, May 3rd, and our Norwood family is so excited to welcome her back. Thanks again to those who donated. Virtual and in-person PSSAs have begun, and all the students are doing well. On Wednesday, May 5th, the teaching staff received a basket of snacks from IEA for Teacher Appreciation Week. They have been enjoying the snacks all week. Home and school chalked our sidewalks for Teacher Appreciation Week. It looked wonderful. They also provided a catered breakfast from the Cracker Barrel for the teaching staff on Friday, May 7th. We appreciate our teaching staff. On Friday, May 7th, the teaching staff was also received muffins from the School Board Central Administration for Teacher Appreciation Week. It was appreciated.
At Prospect Park, the month of April was a month of recognition at Prospect Park School. First, we spent a week celebrating autism awareness with specifically themed days to recognize the power of kindness and teamwork, as well as certain characteristics of autism such as focused passion on topics of interest and sensory sensitivity and the need for acceptance. Together, we can all do our part to help include and support our classmates with autism. We also learned that this year's Franklin Mitt Federal Credit Union Excellence in Teaching Award winner is our own school counselor, Mrs. Curran. We are so proud of her achievement. It is obvious to all of us here why she deserves this award, and we are so happy to see her recognized for her dedication to our students and their families.
For Tencum, on April 7th, Tencum had their spring picture day. Due to COVID issues, we did not have a fall picture day, but on April 7th, everything went off without a hitch. The students had great smiles and followed the instructions of the photographers with no problems. If any students missed their picture, we will be having picture retake day on May 19th. Tencum's PBIS winners for the month of April were Avery Thorin, Lauren Neary, Emma Tramisco, Hayden Rossi, and Declan Tramisco. For showing respect, responsibility, honesty, and health and safety, they won their choice of Rita's Water Ice. Keep up the good work, Tencum students. Each May, Better Hearing and Speech Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness about communication disorders and the role of speech therapists in the school environment. Did you know that teaching is the occupation at the highest risk of developing voice disorders? This month, our speech therapist, Kate Greenberg, provided our teachers with a calendar of the month of May that included one short tip, tool, and activity to do each day with their students. These activities raise awareness of speech and language difficulties, as well as promoted conversation between the classroom environment. Also, as y'all know, this meeting, and I just wanted to thank me through my first year as a rep and making it easier for me.
At the high school, on April 18th to April 23rd, National Student Leadership Week, leaders from each sport team and activity were recognized for a job well done. On April 22nd, NHS induction ceremony was done on Zoom. And from April 26th to April 30th, homecoming week, congratulations to Kushi Desai and Connor Risley for being crowned the king and queen of the class of 2021. And this concludes the report.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Parker, Ms. Hughes. Ms. Caldwell, just so you know, Ms. Fagan did join the meeting. At this time, I would like to congratulate Francesca. This is her last meeting, so thank you for being a great asset to the board. You were throughout the year or the last two years, you were fantastic. Okay, she will be attending the University of Maryland, Baltimore County, to pursue a bachelor's in fine arts degree in acting and minor in African Studies. Okay, so thank you so much, Ms. Parker. We wish you the best. Good luck, and hopefully all your dreams will come true.
I just want to say thank you guys so much for like giving me the opportunity to be on the board. I enjoyed every minute of it. I love reading about the school and all the events. So thank you for listening to me and watching me get through my nerves while reading. Yeah, thank you guys so much.
All right. Okay, and also, Ms. Hughes will be returning next year as our senior board rep, and the elections for the junior rep will be, position will be held next week, and we can announce the new junior rep at the June meeting. Okay? Thank you again so much, Ms. Parker, and we wish you the best. We really do. Ready, moving on to number three, recognition. Ms. Ryan?
Yes, Mr. Phelps, we do have recognition this evening. First and foremost, we would like to recognize the high school home and school poetry contest winners. I want to thank Margie Evans for coordinating the contest and also organizing the scholarships for the students to receive. Usually, we award a first, second, and third prize, but this year, all students are receiving three equal prizes of $50. So our winners, which were judged by parent and teacher volunteers, we have Kelly Connor as one of our winners. We have Say Sina Abraham, and we also have Brianna Madoney. And I would like to thank our teacher judges. We had Noel Acklin and Matthew Larson, who helped with the judging. So congratulations to our poetry contest winners.
Hey, congratulations, guys.
And as we do at the May meeting every year, we recognize our top 5% students. Usually, we have a nice reception prior to the public meeting and invite the families to attend and give each student an opportunity to speak with the board, but unfortunately, due to COVID, we have not been able to do that last year or this year, but we did put together a wonderful video, the top 5% video, which I would like to share out to the board. So if you'll indulge me for a minute, I just want to make sure that I get my technology set up, so please bear with me.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Cornichuck, and I am going next year to Delaware County Community College and West Chester University for their nursing concurrent program because I wanted to go into medical field specifically nursing, and I wanted to learn more about different careers in the medical field and also get a head start in learning those terms and general information. In high school, I participated in key club, but outside, I did some volunteering, mostly in my church, and I participated in choir and playing the piano. So if I was defining Buck Pride, I would probably say it is being proud in who you are and being in school and working to the best of your abilities to become the best that you can be. So my favorite memories are probably of spending time with my friends, of us working on different projects together and talking to all the teachers and their experiences and their wisdom that they impart on us.
Hi, my name is Vivian, and I will be attending Temple University to major in nursing next year. I attended Prospect Park Elementary School before coming to Interboro. Some activities included Physics Olympics, student council, and class congress. My greatest memory at Interboro was hanging out with my friends, interacting with phenomenal teachers, and just having a great time in general. Buck Pride means being responsible and being diligent and being true to yourself.
Hi, I'm Lauren Ward. I went to Prospect Park Elementary School, and I will be going to Drexel University next year for health sciences on a pre-med track. I've been a part of theater since freshman year. I've been to a crew lead on that. And then I'm also in National Honor Society, and I have been in French Club as well. My most exciting moment or memory, I would say, is definitely all the Bucks chants that Moobs would do at the games and the pep rallies and stuff like that. I would define Buck Pride as probably just coming up, coming to school with a positive attitude, and just kind of serving as a good representative of Interboro as a whole. The teachers are great. They all make sure that you're doing what you need to do, that you're on track to graduate. They really care about their students in like a deeper sense than just education. Like, they really make an effort to form a connection with their students, which I really appreciate.
Hi, my name is Maddie Kane, and next year I will be attending Wentworth Institute of Technology to study mechanical engineering. Some of the activities I've been involved in have been tech crew for our theater program, Spanish Club, and I'm also a part of our IQ team. Some of my greatest experiences here at the high school have been from the activities I've been involved in because they've allowed me to meet some cool people and make some great memories. To me, Buck Pride means being respectful, honest, and just overall a good person.
Hi, my name is Audrey Sheets. I used to go to Prospect Park Elementary School, and I will be attending Drexel University next year, and I will be studying architecture and hopefully going into a career with historical preservation. Some groups I was incorporated in were field hockey and swim. I was the swim captain for my swim team at Interboro for the last three years. I was in art service club, and I'm in National Honor Society. I feel like Buck Pride is togetherness. Our school is very much based on close-knit relationships. A lot of the teachers know each other. They used to go to school here, or parents know teachers or kids because they used to know their parents. And everybody just knows everybody, and I feel like the togetherness and the closeness of everybody is the main thing for Buck Pride.
Hi, I'm Kelly Connor. I'm from Tencum School, and next year I plan to double major at West Chester University. At West Chester, I definitely hope to make friends and get into the field of teaching. I actually did an ESY internship here for special education, and I fell absolutely in love with it. I was involved in track and field, key club, Physics Olympics, theater, yearbook club. Bucks buddies, there we go. I would define Buck Pride as passion over something.
Hi, my name is Kyla Valver. I'm from Glenolden, and I will be going to University of the Sciences, and I'm studying occupational therapy and playing softball. Some of the activities I was involved in was I played softball, specifically varsity, for three years, and I'm on student council as a representative. My greatest Interboro experience was being able to participate in sports, specifically softball. Getting to play with such a great group of girls and coaching staff for almost four years was the best opportunity I could ask for. Also, the strong support from the students and teaching staff at each game is what made my years at Interboro great. To me, Buck Pride means that knowing when I walk into school every day, I will be accepted and supported by my classmates and teachers.
Hi, my name is Rachel Dembrowski. I started at Norwood, and my plans are to go to Penn State Brandywine for aerospace engineering. My activities at the high school have been class congress in freshman year. I've been in theater for two years now, technically one and a half. I've been a part of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, and I've been a part of GSA. I've really enjoyed my time here at Interboro, and I don't think there's anything really that I can pick out as my favorite, but all of them have been really great. My definition of Buck Pride is being proud of being a Buck. Just, you know, being nice, being friendly, being everything that we stand for, like being respectful, honest, and responsible, all of that. I think that's truly what being Buck Proud is. Is that the right word? Buck Pride, yeah.
Hi, my name's Logan Stewart. I attended Prospect Park Elementary School, and this fall, I'll be attending the University of Delaware, where I'll be majoring in wildlife ecology and conservation. At the high school, I played softball and field hockey all four years, and I was also involved in the National Honor Society. My favorite memory at the high school has to be attending the football games on Friday nights and seeing all my friends in the student section and hearing the band play. And also this year in softball, when we beat Marvel Newtown in the last inning of our game. To me, Buck Pride means representing my school in both academics and sports and helping out others in my community in any way I can. I'd like to thank my teachers, family, and friends for helping me get to where I am today. And I'm also really thankful for the experience I had at Interboro, and I'm really going to miss everything about the school, but I'm also super excited for the future.
My name is Ally Schalles. I'm from Norwood. I am senior class president and vice president of student council. Next year, I will be attending Elmira College and majoring in biochemistry. I will also be on the Elmira cheer team. At the high school, I am involved in class congress and student council. I was also a member of key club, and I'm on the cheer team at Interboro. This is the activities office, where I spent most of my time the last four years. I get a lot of my work done in here, just prepping for events and planning stuff for the year. Some of my best memories at the high school are making signs with the cheer team and just making signs with the other officers to hang up around the school to promote events and put up announcements and spirit days and all. And also student council conferences. They've always been a lot of fun.
In my experience at Interboro, what separates it from every other school is how close-knit everyone is. It's a smaller school, so you really get to know your teachers and get to know your classmates and the underclassmen, which is very unique.
I'm Miranda Pepper. I went to Norwood Elementary, and next year I plan on going to Penn State Main Campus at the Smeal College of Business. I wanted to start my own business, maybe like start a bakery. Some of the activities I was in were class congress, National Honor Society, and Physics Olympics. The best thing about Interboro is how close-knit the community is. Buck Pride is having school spirit and staying positive. Thank you to all my teachers. It wouldn't be the same without you.
Hi, my name is Kushi Desai, and I went to Prospect Park School, and next year I'm attending the University of the Sciences in Philadelphia and majoring in medical laboratory science. On my freshman year, my biology teacher, Mrs. Warner, she encouraged me to go for a major in biology. So I was researching, you know, my junior year, and I came across medical laboratory science, and it really interested me like with genetics and blood work, so I decided on that as my major. So some of my clubs and activities that I'm involved in are theater, class congress, student council, and key club. As of now, I am treasurer for class congress and student council. Like, I really enjoyed the Bucks games, homecoming, and I got to be part of the musical All Shook Up sophomore year, so that was definitely the highlight of my high school career. Buck Pride to me means being loyal, honest, respectful, and true to yourself. I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff here at Interboro, even at my elementary and middle school, and everyone here, including the students in my grade, for making these past four years the best of my life.
Hi, I'm Elena Harrell. I went to Tencum School, and my plans are to go to Messiah University to study biology and/or sustainability studies to help with conservation, to make a better world for this whole everybody.
I was blessed to be a part of cross-country coming into Interboro High School. It was really fun. It was a great experience to get to know people and to enjoy something I love to do, as well as doing spring and winter track. And on the activities and club side, I was blessed to be a part of the Envirothon, Key Club, and a few others, and I'm thankful for that. Interboro has blessed me with a good education. I'm thankful for times where teachers spent time with me after school to help me with my homework and help me with understanding the curriculum. I'm thankful for times like Minithon, where we all came together to fight against childhood cancer, and you really saw the school come together as a community in this effort. I'm thankful for the experience of May function, which would happen in this space, and so many other things that made Interboro really much like a place that you wanted to be and you wanted to come to every day. Over the course of my time at Interboro, when I think about Buck Pride, I think about this smaller school in southeastern Pennsylvania that has made a big impact on the world, and I think about the people who have graduated and made an impact out there, and I think about the community that we have here. And I'm really touched because Buck Pride is family, Buck Pride is community, and Buck Pride is inclusiveness and kindness. And I'm thankful for the things that we've been able to do here at Interboro and the functions and just everything that's made it a really good experience.
Well, that was amazing and really amazing.
That was really good. If I could just comment, if you noticed, well, first of all, I can't imagine a better group of kids to represent our district with Buck Pride and going out, you know, to colleges and stuff. We're definitely sending out a great group of kids. The other thing is, I don't know if you've noticed, all the, well, not all the kids, but a lot of them, they mentioned the Buck Pride, the family, the district, how close-knit everybody is, and that's one of the things I keep telling you. That's what makes Interboro so great, is how tight-knit we are. We're not an employer. We're a family. We're all a family in this district. We're all here doing the best that we can for our kids in the district, and we truly have a love for each other, and I think that's great. And if I could just say, congratulations, Mr. Kelly. Five of them kids out of the top 5% came out of Prospect Park. Good job. Good job.
Mr. Phelps, I'd also just like to take a minute to recognize the students from Mr. Herman's visual media class that helped put this together. Haley Howitt, Angelina Aguilar, Christian Perez, and Rachel Dembrowski. They did a really great job putting this video together and really showcasing the, you know, the work and the time and the effort and the energy that these students have put into their high school career. I have the utmost faith that they are going to go out into the world and do amazing things, and hopefully they'll come back and visit and share all the great things that they've accomplished. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Ryan. All righty, moving on to number four. Mr. Evans, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on to number five.
Motion 5.1, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on April 21st, 2021 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And next, we will hear from our solicitor, Ms. May.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President and board members. The Solicitor's Office continues to work on contract matters, on special ed matters, and on litigation matters.
Thank you, Ms. May. All right, moving on to number seven, Mr. Evans.
On the finance, motion 7.1, that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending April 30th, 2021 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Phelps, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just want to make you aware that Ms. Fagan left the meeting. So the vote should be seven rather than eight. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. I'm glad you told me because what I see on my screen is, I can't see everybody, so. All righty, moving on to the next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 7.2, that fund disbursements in an amount of $3,831,535.68 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 7.3, that the budget transfers for 2020, 2021 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
All right, then we will move on to number nine, our committee reports. 9.1, finance. Mr. Chabon?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Finance meeting was held on Monday, May 3rd, 7:00 p.m. The first item on the agenda was a general budget update. Overall, our revenues increased $730,000. This was mainly from receiving federal money known as ESRS. And I just want the public to be aware, for the next couple of years, we will be seeing the acronym ESRS on the agenda, and we will be discussing it because the money has been allotted and it can be utilized over the next couple of years. So that word ESRS will be in my report a decent amount. We saw a few decreases in the revenues in local and state just from various assessment changes and a reduction in our Boeing rate. On the expenditure side, overall, we increased about $291,000, but this is due to offsetting the federal money. So we had to add the federal money into the revenues, but we also had to put it in the expenditures. We did decrease the salary line item by about $266,000 from net decreases in retirements and resignations. And the special ed department saw a reduction of about $93,000 because a family that was getting services moved out of the district. As of the May meeting, at a 0% tax increase, we have a deficit of $868,000. But if we were to do a 3.5% tax increase, we're at a $604,000 surplus. Tonight, on the agenda, there's a proposed final budget that says 3.5%, but again, just for the public to know that this is a procedural vote, and we are still, this board has no appetite to go to that 3.5% tax increase. The impact of a 3.5% tax increase on the average assessed household is about $14 a month. Mr. Evans also had a short presentation at the finance meeting that I think he's going to address during his report about the capital improvement projects. We just touched a little bit on that in terms of finances, and the administration is putting together more documents for the board in terms of the capital improvement projects and its impact on our finances moving forward. We discussed replacing the Norwood School cafeteria serving lines, which is paid through the food service fund. This item is on the agenda tonight as well. We also discussed the food service management contract renewal with Nutrition, Inc., which is also on the agenda tonight. And then finally, we had time to discuss the preliminary financial statements, and the meeting was adjourned. That is all I have for my finance report. That is all I have for my financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chavon. And 9.2, the GBO, Mr. Goldsberg, did you want me to do that, sir?
Since. Yes, I appreciate that, Mr. Phelps. At least for the first, number one, I happen to not be here for that part. I do believe I was able to get here for the other two items that were on here, but not the math presentation by Mr. Evans.
Okay. All righty, well, I'll start it and I'll let you finish it. How's that?
That sounds like a plan.
Okay. At the GBO meeting, following the finance meeting on May 3rd, the following items were presented. Dr. Mark Evitable presented the new math program that will be implemented for the 2021, 2022 school year. The information will be made available on our district website for further information. So, if anybody would like to go on there and look it over. And I would just like to thank Mr. Evitable. It was a lot of work. I know he did a great job on that. Okay, and I will let you take over there, Mr. Goldsberg.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The second item covered during the GBO meeting was by Mr. Sonnet and it was, and we were talking about a proposed technology fee schedule based upon getting some feedback from, from parents and from administrators and also from the technology department and costs associated with replacements and so on. I don't believe there is, any of the fees have been settled. That's still up for discussion as to what we're proposing. There are, there are other districts that just do a flat fee for everybody. And then there are other, and then there are others that are just imposing fees for, you know, gross negligence and other things. So, I think there's still some, still some discussion as to, as to how we're going to handle that in the, in the upcoming academic year, the 21, 22 school year. The third item that was discussed was, I do believe Dr. Ekman discussed with us the pilot of the new ELA program that they're looking at and, and going to be talking about that or at least piloting this new, this program, trying it out for a year with a few teachers from some of the different grades and then getting some feedback and then, and then going, going from there. There are a couple of different ones that they had looked at, but I think they've settled on at least maybe one, possibly two, that they're going to be looking at. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsberg. Just so everybody gets credit that they deserve, Mr. Patterson, Eric Patterson.
Oh, Mr. Patterson, that's right.
Yes, the ELA, okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Good thing you took notes.
All righty, moving on to 9.3, Mr. Chavon, Legislative.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. There were two bills that were discussed that could greatly impact our district. Senate Bill 664, which provides parents the option to have their child repeated grade during the 21, 22 school year due to COVID. The bill will only, would only apply to the 21, 22 school year to address learning gaps related to the pandemic. Parents would have until July 15th to decide on whether their children should advance or be held back. You know, this obviously could impact our student numbers per grade. I had sent an email to Mrs. Riley. She's going to keep an eye out on this legislation as well. At the meeting, a lot of the board directors were going to reach out to their representatives. Senator Carney has said that, you know, this is going to be fast-tracked and most likely signed by the governor. So, this is most likely is going to be implemented. We just have to wait to see how it's going to impact us as a district, but it could potentially impact, you know, students per grade. Senate Bill 73 was passed by the Education Committee. This bill would establish a program to allow public schools to apply to PDE for a waiver of many, but not all state-imposed mandate. This bill could be a game changer in providing more flexibility for districts, you know, when it comes to some of these unfunded mandates that are provided. There was a list of mandates that were exempt, like special education and things like that. But, you know, if this goes through, this may, you know, allow us some options to, you know, not do some of the things that the state mandates that don't necessarily impact us. The conversation was that some of these mandates that the legislature passes may work for some schools, but not all schools. And, you know, sometimes they just paint with a broad brush and it impacts everybody. And then finally, PSBA and the public school leaders across the state are holding a virtual rally for charter school reform on Tuesday, May 25th at 9:30. Any board members is interested in attending, just shoot me an email. I have more information. And that is it, Mr. Phelps.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chavon. Next up, 9.4, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Goldsberg.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. There has not been a meeting within the past month, and so I do not have anything to report.
All right, sir, thank you. And moving on to 9.5, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris.
That has more time for me then. Let me add, I'm going to add to my, never mind. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met on May 5th, 2021. Approved was a contract with Chester School District for the DCI to provide threat assessment training and consultation services from May 12th, 2021 to June 18th, 2021. Also approved in agreement with, for STEM Learning Library for the 2021, 2022 school year. Approved a contract with Chester County Charter School for DCI to provide training for their administrative retreat from June 29th, 2021 to July 1st, 2021. Approved a contract with Frontline for the 2021, 2022 school year for Frontline to provide professional learning management systems to DCI programs and member districts at a discount for the consortium rate. Approved and implement the Office for Workforce Development. Year one round, used grant to employ 20 students for 2021, July to June 30th, 2022. Approved to implement the 2021, 2022, that's wrong, the 2020, 2021 Governor Emergency Relief Community of Educational Equity Grant. The next DCIU Director's Meeting will be June 2nd at 6:45 at the DCIU and more. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And next up, 9.6, the Capital Improvement Committee, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir, as Mr. Chavon has said, we did report out in the Finance Committee about the newly-formed ad hoc committee to handle the capital improvement project. Largely, at this point, we're still fleshing out the details of, of the proposal as well as the funding. But what was discussed at our ad hoc committee meeting was, a PowerPoint presentation was given by Dewey Engineering of the proposed work at the kindergarten academy as well as at the high school. At the kindergarten academy, it improved, I'm sorry, it included the abatement work that's to be done in the basement that has already been funded and scheduled for this summer. And then the addition to that abatement work was the first floor office space creation in the open courtyards on either side of the front vestibule as you enter the kindergarten academy. So, that included some restroom enhancements, some office enhancements as well as safe entrance, safe and secure entrance enhancements. And that is, you know, that has not been approved or funded yet, that part of the kindergarten academy. The high school included a major proposal on considerable expansion of the building footprint, including in addition to house the new cafeteria, in addition to house a new gym, relegating the existing gym to an auxiliary gym and improvements to, improvements and expansion of the auditorium to include, I think, 100 more seats as well with a balcony. And by pushing the auditorium out a little bit into the hallway, the existing cafeteria was going to be changed into enhanced life skills space. And they're going to, on the second floor, square off some of those pie-shaped classrooms to make better use of those. So, all this is still in a proposal stage. We're going to continue to flesh out the details of the proposal and put together a working group, including community stakeholders, staff, school board representation, and of course, the engineering architectural firm once we do hire one. So, next up for this particular proposal is to, after going through a general overview of the funding from Mr. High School and Audrey Bear, it is a considerable outlay of long-term debt. And the administration is putting together an impact statement for the community so that we can show just about how much it's going to mean to our individual community taxpayers. It's not going to, it's not going to be, I don't want to say it's not going to be an increase to the taxes, but it's not going to be substantial, largely because it's spread over such a long period of time, funded through bonds and whatnot. There's also some plan con benefits that can be applied for and other grants, like sustainable building grants that the engineering firm also offered to apply for. They can offset some of the costs of the proposed funding. As I said, we're going to have school and community engagement so that we give the community a chance for, through town halls, a chance for feedback and input and also to work the win buy-in to the proposal. So, we will be developing essentially a district community stakeholders committee. And then next steps is for the board to approve the project as, as proposed or some likable facsimile thereof. And then, or Dewey Engineering to develop the specs to match that, that accepted proposal. Then we would have to select an architectural firm and who would start fleshing out the details and the looks of the buildings. And then from that, we would have to move forward with securing funding. So, that's where we're at right now until we take those next steps. The administration is putting together and fleshing out all the details, creating working documents for the ad hoc committee to come back to the board with. And I'll be looking at those next week. And this ad hoc committee will meet again on Tuesday, the 25th. Okay? That's all I have for now. Questions, answers, I'm sure there are plenty. But until we make, until we get a little more fleshed out detail to provide to the board to vote on, you know, we might want to hold your questions. But if you have any questions for tonight, certainly fire away.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Evans.
And you can email me too, if you have any questions you want to send to me offline. Thank you.
Okay, sir. All righty, moving on to number 10, Personnel, Mr. Evans.
Motion, the following personnel actions be approved, starting with motion 10.1 on page two and going to motion 10.8 on page four.
Second.
Things have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Ms. Fagan is back in the house. Okay, moving on to number 11 there.
Mr. Phelps, I'm going to interrupt you again. Would it be okay to let Grace and Francesca? I'm sorry. I know Francesca has lines to run with her friends for the play.
This was her last one. I thought she'd want to stay for the whole thing. I'm sorry.
I mean, it was very interesting, hearing about the heater, balcony, that's insane.
See, see what they're doing when you leave, Ms. Parker?
I'm upset.
Yes, Ms. Parker, Ms. Hughes, these can be excused. Sorry about that.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, thank you.
Bye-bye now. Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, no problem. Moving on to number 11, Mr. Evans.
Motion with regret, the following retirements be approved. 11.1, Chris Goldberg, computer media arts teacher at Norwood School with 23 years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective June 30th, 2021. 11.2, Savannah Salerno, English teacher at the high school with 23 years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective June 30th, 2021. Margaret Joan Urban, school psychologist at the high school with 22 years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective June 14th, 2021. And 11.4, Pam Ortiz, language arts teacher, Prospect Park School, with 21 years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective June 14th, 2021.
Second.
Hi. So, I was like, you know, on your boat, I sent you an email.
I'm sorry. Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Sorry, Mr. Phelps, if I may, it's Mr. Goldsberg.
Yes, Mr. Goldsberg.
Yes. 89 years of service between the four of them. That's, that's incredible. I'm jealous. And I, I am very happy for all of them. Dr. Goldberg just informed my daughter today that he's going to be leaving and she was quite upset. So, but I want to thank him and thank, thank the rest of them for their years of service.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsberg. Any other comments from any of the boards? Myself, yeah, Mr. Evans.
Just wanted to thank them all again for their service and their years of passion and dedication to the district. I don't know every one of them, but the ones I do know were a very, very valuable asset to the district and community. And we're going to miss them.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Myself, I would just, I want to know where is Prospect Park going to get that energy to replace Ms. Ortiz? Because she was always so much fun. I can't even begin to tell, I don't know how to replace her because I don't know anybody that has that much energy. They'll have to get like three people to just replace the energy that she has in that school. Unbelievable. All of them, you're right, you know, the years that they put in. And again, great job, Pat. You know, we really appreciate it. Each and every one of yous, the dedication that you gave the district. And the only thing we can say is we hope you enjoy your retirement. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in, or motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motions to the following items be approved, 12.1 to 12.7.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Movements carry eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education, People's Services, motions that the following items be approved, 13.1 to 13.6 on page six.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Movements carry eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, 14.1 to 14.3.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Movements carry eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved, 15.1 and 15.2.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Movements carry eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, 16.1 to 16.3.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Motion have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion seventeen, that the Board of School Directors approved the memorandum of understanding between the local police department from police departments from Glen Olden, Norwood, Prospect Park, and Tinnicum Township for school years twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. The purpose of this memorandum is to establish procedures to be followed when certain specific incidents incidents occur on school property at any school-sponsored activity or any public or on any public conveyance providing transportation to or from a school or school-sponsored activity, including but not limited to a school bus. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion eighteen is a roll call motion. Board of School Directors approve the flexible instructional day program. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Fraylinger?
Yes.
Ms. Kradzuski?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion nineteen is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the proposed final general fund budget for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty one to June thirty, twenty twenty two with proposed expenditures of seventy-one million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, requiring an increase of point eight three seven five mils over the current mileage rate adjusted for county reassessment, resulting in a tax increase of three point five percent for a new total mileage rate of twenty-four dot seven six seven three mils. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Phelps, just, you know, this is what I referred to in my finance report, that this is just a procedural motion or procedural vote. This is not the final approval of a budget.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Shavon. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Fraylinger?
Yes.
Ms. Kradzuski?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Motion, Mr. Evans.
Next item on the agenda, number twenty, is election of school board secretary to serve for the period from July first, twenty twenty one until June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, as per section four oh four of the Pennsylvania School Code.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call for nominees for board secretary?
Mr. Phelps, I'd like to nominate Mr. Evans.
Okay, do we have any other nominees? Okay. Do we have to do a motion to close nominations on this? A motion to close nomination?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor of having Mr. Evans continue on as the secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Congratulations, Mr. Evans. You're the man.
Well, thank you very much. I do enjoy, you know, I enjoy talking. If anybody ever else wants to try it out, they're certainly welcome to do so. I know I talk too quickly, but I appreciate the responsibilities and faith you have shown in me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans, for what you have already done, the years that you have been secretary, done a fantastic job. And we appreciate you continuing on. Okay, moving on to number twenty one.
Number twenty one, election of treasurer to serve for the period from July one, twenty twenty one until June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, as per section four oh four of the Pennsylvania School Code.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call for nominees for treasurer.
Mr. Phelps, I'd like to nominate Ms. Danielle Fagan.
Okay, do we have any other nominees? Hearing none. At this time, I would like to make a motion to close the nominations. Second, okay. All those in favor of having Ms. Fagan continue on as treasurer, please say aye. Opposed.
I just want to say I appreciate everyone and thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Fagan. Thank you for, you know, for taking on the extra responsibilities of treasurer. We do appreciate it. Motion carries eight zero. All righty, moving on. Do we have any old business? Okay, hearing none. We will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. First, on behalf of the administrators here in the district, I would like to congratulate the teachers that are retiring or approved to retire at this meeting. I've had the pleasure of knowing all of these folks that are listed here. Mr. Goldberg and I worked for years together at Norwood School, and I learned a lot about technology for him when I first started, from him when I started to teach. So he's had a great impact on the students of Norwood, as have the other folks who are part of the group. You know, Ms. Ortiz, you are true with that, Mr. Phelps, a lot of energy with her. And I, I think she might have been Justin's English teacher when she was at Prospect Park, if I'm not correct. Silvana Salerno.
I remember the fact, I think.
Silvana Salerno, another amazing English teacher who has taught at the high school for years. We did spend some time at Tinnicum together long ago. And Dr. Joan Urban, who has been one of our school psychologists, who has had great impact with many, many meetings and testing and working with parents to ensure that their children were receiving services that were appropriate for, to receive an education here in Interboro. So I do wish them all well as they retire. Over the past couple of months, we have, we are seeing many, many teachers retiring. And, you know, it's, it's a hard decision to make, but it's, you know, you know, when it's your time. And hopefully, there's lots happening for them beyond Interboro School District. But we wish them well, and we hope to stay in touch and that they'll keep in touch with us and let us know what's happening, you know, in their retirement. So congratulations to all of them. Next, we have coordinated with Pat Quinn, a flag-in day at Holy Cross Cemetery, which is taking place on Saturday, May twenty second at ten a.m. Any family that is interested in joining or staff member, everyone's meeting at Holy Cross Cemetery at six twenty-six Bailey Road in Yaden. Everyone should dress appropriately with sneakers. You are walking around the cemetery. Two years ago, we brought students over and we did it during a weekday. And we had great turnout and great family participation and student participation. It really was a wonderful day. So we're hoping that next year post-COVID, we'll be able to bring that back and have many of our students and staff attend, you know, on a planned day. But if anyone has any questions, they can contact Pat Quinn. We do have the information available on the website. And finally, we are now entering these last few weeks of the school year. I really want to thank our parents who have been so wonderful this year with everything that we have had to do dealing with COVID. Our parents have been so supportive of all of our change in plans and a lot of correspondence and needing to return to virtual learning depending upon COVID cases. And I really can't thank them enough. You know, I think we've heard it a lot tonight, how important this community is and how they care about each other and how we come together in really difficult times. And this whole pandemic has not been easy, and our goal for this summer is to continue all of our hard work that we've started and to hopefully get back to more of a sense of normalcy come September. I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like. We haven't figured that out yet, and we're not sure where we will be in this pandemic, but we'll continue to keep all of our community members updated. We will be hosting, you know, our virtual meetings that we did last summer just to keep parents informed of what's going on in preparation for the upcoming school year. So please make sure your contact information is updated, that you are checking the website and your email as we will continue to send out correspondence over the summer. Again, I want to thank all the parents, thank all of our staff members who have been amazing. Our teachers have done an outstanding job, our administrators. I'm really so proud to be the superintendent here and to work with people who really do care about kids and have come together during a very, very difficult situation. So, and of course, the board, we could not do it without you. So, thank you very much, and that's it for me.
You lost, Mr. Phelps. There he is. You're muted, Mr. Phelps.
I didn't know if that was me or, or Ms. Riley. Everything froze.
He kicked you off.
It figures. She didn't want me to disclose, yeah. All right, were you done, Ms. Riley? All right, you're muted, just so you know.
Yes, I was, I am done.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any comments? Okay, hearing none. I'm sure the entire board wants to congratulate the teachers that are retiring and thank them for their service. I'm sure. Okay, the Interboro School District will continue to hold all future meetings remotely until further notice. Please visit the Interboro School District website at www.innorborsd.org for further information. On Tuesday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, an ad hoc capital improvement committee meeting will be held at six thirty P.M. On Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty one, the Finance GBO Committee meeting will be held at seven P.M. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty one, at seven P.M. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty one, at seven P.M. And the only thing I did forget is I wanted to congratulate the top five percent once again. You guys did a great job. I know it's not easy to get there. And I would just like to say a special shout out to Audrey Sheets, my neighbor. She is on there. Great job. All righty, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.